Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Rules and Government Relations meeting of, let's say, October 1st. It's 5:00 PM. Let's see, do we have any minutes to approve?
I did write the April 2nd minutes, but I forgot this out.
All right.
And secondly, I have the last one minutes. They're going to be done. I promise you, you'll get them very soon. But, so everybody knows, all of our meetings are recorded, and if you want to know what was said, the video recordings are archived forever, and you'll know exactly what was said, and not rely on my paraphrasing, shall I say, which I'm being kind to myself when I say it.
Yeah, it is really quite helpful. Okay, so let's get into it. So the way that I'd like to run this, unless anybody objects, is...
You're the accomplice, sir.
Yes. Councilor Coniff, since you're the one that introduced this new business, I'd like to give you an opportunity to present it.
Okay.
Then we'll open up the floor to public speak, then, you know, we'll close the floor and deliberate, and then we'll take a vote. In some cases, in city council meetings where we have a committee, we've, we sort of suspend our rules to allow for some crosstalk during the deliberation process. When we get to this sort of number of people, we can't really accommodate that, so, you know, well, we'll go into that more in a minute, but just if you, if there's anything that you want to say, I'd encourage you to say it when we open up the floor. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilor Coniff.
Thank you, Councilor Peak. So I wanted to basically break down what this bill is proposing into three categories, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding around what this bill is meant to do. We're not talking about abortion, non-abortion. That's not on the table. That's not what this bill is. It's not, it's, it's not, we're not going to have that conversation tonight. So what this bill is that I support is, has three components to it. It is removing the, what I would call, an onerous requirement that forces 18-year-olds or teens to have to go to their parents to get permission to have an abortion. Now, we can't legislate healthy families, so I would imagine most people have a healthy relationship with their kids, and they can have that open conversation. Not everyone is so lucky. There are some kids who, because of incest, because of the, the child abuse that they're suffering, they can't go to a parent. They will be hurt if they go to a parent. They then have to wait and go to a judge, and have that judge go through all these ramifications while they sit there for a certain amount of time, and wait, and have to deal with the fact that they are, they are carrying a fetus that is the product of rape or incest. And that is painful for them. So this particular bill in front of Boston right now is to remove the requirement to have parental approval. The second thing that this bill does is to bolster safety net coverage for people who do not qualify for abortion or reproductive right access when they do not qualify for mass health. So today, mass health covers abortion fully. This, this is adding a safety net coverage for those low-income people who today have access to reproductive health but not abortion coverage. So it's a, it's a, and, and to be perfectly honest, that coverage happens today, but this will be putting it and codifying it into Massachusetts law. So it does happen today that low-income folks are able to be covered somewhat by abortions. This is putting it into codification, but I think I need to be really clear. Mass health already today covers abortions. The last one, and this is where I think it got a little klugey, is today, in Massachusetts, a woman can have an abortion after 24 weeks. That is law. It can happen. And it happens in the case of protecting the health of the mother. So it can happen, it's, it's a law today. So we're not asking the state to create a law that allows abortion to go past 24 weeks. It's a law today. What we are asking is that they add, instead of just having it in the case of the health of the mother, to add in the case of a diagnosis of a fatal fetal anomaly. So between a doctor and a patient, there are a number of tests that can be run, and after 24 weeks, you kind of learn all of the, the, the health of your child at that point. And what, what happens is people learn devastating information about their, their child. And with the help of a doctor, and there are so many tests that can be run today, they can learn if that child will survive outside of the womb. And what we're suggesting is that when that diagnosis of a fatal fetal anomaly is made, that that be a situation where an abortion can happen after 24 weeks. In no way, in any scenario, are we talking about advocating that women, and, and the thought that women would willy-nilly go have abortions after 24 weeks is a little insulting. But the fact that there is devastating information, there is a story that I was reading yesterday of a woman in Massachusetts who received the diagnosis of a fatal fetal anomaly, it's in here somewhere what the name of it is, and she was at 23 weeks and five days. So she had two days to make a decision about her, her pregnancy. And the doctor explained to her all of the, the problems with her child, that there was very malformed brain, there was malformed limbs, all of her, the internal organs were not working properly. And she said at the time, you know, "So what can I expect when I have, when I give birth to this baby?" And the doctor kind of looked at her, and she said, "Will the baby essentially just sleep until it dies?" Like, it was going to die, and she was ready for that, but she's like, "Will it just sleep until it dies?" And the doctor cringed, and he said, "The baby won't be comfortable enough to sleep. It will be in pain from the minute it is born." So this gives people with that devastating diagnosis, so they don't have to put that child through, and they don't have to put themselves through. The other thing this woman said was, people never cared about her in this whole process. She was a vessel, and that, that's the only thing that the government and the church cared about, was that she was a vessel. And she said that she, she does not want her personal health decisions to be legislated by the church or by the government, nor should they. So those are the three things that this ROW Act will do. If you're thinking any other thing, then we, that's the point of having this dialogue, but those are the three things that are largely in this, there are some things about reporting, changing and taking out some reporting requirements, and then there are some things around the language as to how they define abortion, which is so archaic and so offensive that it, it does need to be re-jiggered. So those are the three things that are part of the ROW Act, and I don't know that I have any additional things to offer. We can, I know a couple of people have submitted some things, we can talk about that, or we can just do open speak. I'll leave it entirely up to you.
She did bring that page.
Yes, I'm sorry. So Peg, you just said that this new law does not add any provision for someone after 24 weeks determining...
Can you kind of move closer to the speaker so we can hear better?
Oh, sure.
Are the mics on?
The mics are on, correct?
Yeah. Can you hear?
Does that help you?
Oh.
Oh.
Okay.
That's a little loud.
Thank you.
I apologize. Peg, my question is, what you just said was that there is no new provision in the law that allows for someone to terminate pregnancy up to the point of birth for no reason other than fatal...
Fetal...
Fetal, fetal anomalies.
Or where the mother's life is in danger.
Or when the life, in that part where the woman's life is in danger is already in the law.
Correct.
The only thing being added is fatal fetal anomalies.
Correct.
And that's a decision based on what the privacy of the doctor and the patient decide is necessary.
Correct.
So the baby doesn't have to go through trauma, et cetera. But that's, there is no provision in here where a healthy fetus can be aborted after 24 weeks for no reason.
Right. There, it would be, that would be illegal.
Illegal and, well, ridiculous. And secondly, I'm just going to stop, but I think that's, that's an important distinction, because I believe that some, some things like that were said. There is no distinction. We are not changing, a lot of the law is already written, so we're not changing that. And let me just say something about resolutions in general and our ability to do things. Resolutions are the opinion of the council, yes, and they do inform our state representatives, our senator and our state rep, Councilor Carey, Councilor Carey, he was a councilor, Representative Carey, who is a sponsor of the bill. So we're already, so we don't have authority to make this law happen. We are stating an opinion. Secondly, I know all of you are here tonight, the Rules Committee, whether we say yes or no, or no recommendation, does not make a decision for the full council. The full council will discuss this, and there'll be more public speak. Our decision is not the end of it. Even if we all said no, it's not the end of it. So I want you to know that that meeting, I think it's tomorrow night, that you plan on bringing forward tomorrow night, when the full council gets the vote on it. So I wanted people to be informed of the process of how this happens. At the committee level, you're all allowed to speak, of course, but if you want to influence decisions, the full council is where you would do it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the floor up to public speak. Couple things, if you could please just keep your comments inside of three minutes, just to accommodate the number of people here, I would appreciate that. Also, in giving your comments, there's likely to be some people who don't agree with each other. I would really ask that you address your comments to this body and not to one another, and I would just ask that people be respectful.
I just, I have a question.
Sure.
Why are they doing it this way? And why, why didn't they just put it on the ballot to see what people want, instead of a board deciding in each town whether they're going to do it or not, whether, what we decide, what we feel or not?
I can take a shot.
Didn't they just put it on the ballot?
Right, so just to be clear, the city council of East Hampton has a lot of different things that we do, and one thing is that we sometimes send resolutions saying, "This is the opinion of the city council." Those opinions are completely non-binding. They're simply expressing to our peers in the state legislature, in the federal legislature or what have you, or sometimes to the voters, what the opinion of these nine elected officials are. Does that make sense?
No.
Let me, let me...
Because nine people out of 50 people doesn't make any sense at all. If it's on the ballot and people know what it is, just like when you're vote, you're voting, then you're reading the bill. You know, we have the bill here, and you say that there's no, that they don't want to go late, the whole term, but that's not what it says.
Well, look, yeah.
Maybe we need to have, you know, her introduce who she is.
I, I will, I will just answer the question with regard to how the law works. State laws are developed at the state level. There's two ways a law can happen at the state level. We're not adopting a law, we're not writing a law. It's state law is being proposed at the state level, in the House and in the Senate. That's legislative action, that's why we elect representatives. If it wants to be on the ballot, that's done by initiative petition. A lot of things get there. It takes a lot of voters to decide to put it on the ballot. That's another way it can happen. So none of this ever goes to the ballot, it's up to you to elect representatives, and if you disagree with what your state representative is doing, then you don't vote them in again. But that's what we're doing. We're not adopting any laws here, we're just stating an opinion. I think if we want to go up to that, I just want to say one last thing. The three-minute rule is a rule of the council, and secondly, over there are two clipboards. After you speak, print your name so I can put it in the record, okay? There's a clipboard for those in favor, and a clipboard for those opposed to our resolution. If you're opposed to, in general, of things, that's not what we want to hear. We want to hear what you think of the resolution, okay? Because that's what we're talking about. That's my opinion, anyway. You can say whatever you want, this is free speech, but...
If it's already a law, what are you...
Some of it is being changed. There is law being proposed, which is what we're, that is, what she just talked about was being changed.
And I thought you just said it was made up in Boston, not here.
Right, so Boston is considering a law right now, which is the thing that we're describing. What the city council is considering doing is basically sending a letter to Boston saying that the nine of us, the city councilors, or whichever ones vote for it, support the passage of that law. That's all that this is about, is just us giving our opinion as elected officials.
I have one more question.
Okay, well, you know what, at this point, let's just, let's just start as...
Come up here, sir.
Come up to the podium and speak.
Yeah, if you could just give your name and address while you're up there.
And this is being recorded, please be silent.
Yeah, so my concern is...
Your name first, sir.
My name's Anthony Zimowski.
Okay, I'm starting.
And I found out about this meeting today and the one tomorrow, just by chance. Why is it not published in the paper? The seniors in town, they don't do Facebook. A lot of them don't, don't go on the TV.
Right.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, I wish I could answer. We, you know, there's, there's like an ongoing discussion right now about what gets, like how we inform people of all the business that goes through, but, you know, the city council is holding subcommittee meetings like this about...
My concern is that the reason they don't publicize it is because the seniors will get out and vote, as the others won't.
No, the, the reporting of this meeting, as with all meetings, is the same, so there's nothing nefarious about this meeting that we didn't, we publicize all meetings the same. And so there's nothing different about how we, how we communicated this one. We believe, and we agree with you, that the communication of when meetings are globally is problematic and we need to fix it. But this meeting was scheduled like we schedule all of our subcommittee meetings, in the same manner.
All right, thank you.
And just in general, when we're doing public speak, we're, we're supposed to not do a lot of questions and answers, so...
Sir.
Whoever wants to come up, they're, they're welcome to just come up in whatever order you want. Do you want me to do it?
I got it. My name is John Valanti, residing in East Hampton. As you gave the summary of, of these resolutions and that were, you're working on, you gave the impression that it was for fatal fetal anomalies, where the child could not exist outside of the womb. But as I read this in section 12M, it says, "The patient is beyond 24 weeks from the commencement of pregnancy, and the abortion is necessary to protect the patient's life or physical or mental health, or in cases of lethal fatal anomalies, or where the fetus is incompatible with sustained life outside the uterus. Medical judgment may be exercised in the light of factors, physical, emotional, psychological, familial, and person's age, relevant to the well-being of the patient." That's a lot broader than just fatal fetal anomalies. If it's, if somebody determines, a doctor determines, that for familial problems, and I consider familial problems, somebody pressurizing a woman to have an abortion, or something of that nature, or the idea that it's unacceptable, you know, to have such a child, and they're getting pressure to do it. I, I think that the bill, that the, the resolution that you're talking about is way too soft, and they will, it will be carried to the, to the, to the far extreme, my opinion, and it sounds like it in the writing.
Thanks, sir. Sorry. Oh, my God.
Hi, my name is Pam Hibbert, I live in East Hampton. I didn't catch all that you said, so, because I didn't get in here quick enough, but one of the things that the ROW bill does do is, or it doesn't do now, but it, expanding it to do that, is allow abortions during nine months of pregnancies for virtually no reason. So it expands it to that. This is the SB 1209. The other thing it would do is eliminate any requirements that abortion be performed in a hospital. The third thing would be eliminate the requirement that provides medical care to a child who survives an abortion attempt. The fourth thing is eliminate the requirement that a minor under the age of 18 have the consent of a parent, a guardian, or even a court. They don't have to have the consent of any of those. They're under 18, they get pregnant, they can just, without their parents' permission anymore, they can just go get that done. The fifth thing is provide state funding for women, state funding for women who cannot afford the procedure. And that's all I want to say about that. I would also like to say, I've been in the pro-life movement for 20 years, and during that time, I have helped parents who have, are pregnant with triplets, twins, you know, multiple births, and they have all been told, every single set of triplets, which is seven, have been told by the doctor that they just have to, really, to save their own lives, to save the mom's life, just eliminate at least two of them. It is so pushed right now on our society, this killing field, it's ridiculous. And every one of these wonderful, brave parents of these triplets chose life. They did not kill two of their children to satisfy the popular abortion realm that's going on right now. They had their children, the children are beautiful, there was nothing wrong with them. Some of, one of the sets of triplets were born at five pounds apiece, which is very rare, because a lot of times they are under five pounds, but none of these children had any physical problems with any, anything.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Alice Charland, and I live in East Hampton. I've done a little bit of research, and I think maybe there are some things that people don't realize about the human fetus. We know that a child in utero has permanent fingerprints, which are completely unique, and identify it as a separate individual person, unlike any other person. And those fingerprints are set in stone by the time a fetus reaches 17 weeks. We also know this unique individual person doesn't share blood with its mother, their blood type is not even the same. Occasionally, it is. Clearly, every human fetus is an identifiable, unique person, and while nurtured by its mother, is not a part of the human, of the mother's body. In January 2015, an extensively researched document on the science of fetal pain was published by the Family Research Council, the FRC. The editorial experts include Associate Professor in the Field of Anesthesia and Pain Management at Harvard Medical Center, and the Residential and the Residency Program Director at the Department of Anesthesiology, Perioperative, and Pain Medicine at Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston. The report cites more than 30 scientific studies, testimonies, medical evidence, and real-life experiences in its exposition of the science of fetal pain as the week's advanced post-fertilization. The current federal law cited by Planned Parenthood reflects science from 1973. But with advances in modern science and ongoing research, it is becoming more apparent that the unborn child can feel pain by 20 weeks, that is, five months, or even earlier in pregnancy. Following is one sample of the clear evidence provided by the 2003 Medical Textbook on Maternal, Fetal, and Neonatal Physiology, and I quote, "Pain receptors appear around the mouth four to five weeks post-fertilization, followed by the development of nerve fibers which carries stimuli to the brain. Around six weeks post-fertilization, the unborn child first responds to touch." That's six weeks. "By 18 weeks post-fertilization, pain receptors have appeared throughout the body. I urge each one of you to act compassionately, and on behalf of our most vulnerable persons, vote against the ROW Act as being representative of the wishes of the citizens of East Hampton, and I thank you."
Don't forget to sign in, everybody.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Rothschild, live at 2 South Hampshire Street in East Hampton. I would like to thank the city council for acting compassionately. I can tell you what this amendment means to me personally. I went very excited to my 20-week ultrasound, expecting twin girls. Having had a tough pregnancy, had, took me a long time to get pregnant, my partner and I were overjoyed to be in, excited to be welcoming these girls into our lives. I went to find out maybe what gender they were, I was excited. My ultrasound went from one hour to two hours, where specialists came in, and I learned that one of my twin girls had hydrocephaly, and the other one had spina bifida. Her legs were already paralyzed, such that they could not even make out what her gender was. She was already two and a half weeks behind her sister, and would not make it to term. I can't tell you what devastating news this was. I can tell you what I was wearing the moment I heard this news, like a trauma that's bred into you, it's part of me, it will always be part of me. So this was 22 weeks, okay? We didn't really know what was going on at that point. So what do you need to do next? You need to get a amniocentesis. That takes a week to get back. We're going up to 20, that is at 20 weeks, that puts you at 21 weeks. If that test didn't bring us the information we needed to understand what was happening with our, with our daughters, we would then need to get a neonatal MRI. That would, again, push the date back. If we didn't have the information we needed, this would mean that in this point of trauma, I would be having to travel to another state that would allow me to end a pregnancy carrying two daughters who would not make it to term. I can't tell you what kind of mental anguish this put on our family. And the only people that were involved in that decision were me, my partner, our family, and our doctors, the only people who should be involved in that decision. Nobody else in this room should be involved in that decision. This isn't something that people make lightly. People like to bring up these hypo, you know, these situations, what if someone pressures you? That's not how it works. And every kind of listing they listed about these, these babies, how human they are, let me tell you something, women are just as human. We are adults with full thinking capacity, full range of emotions, and we do not need people that are not experts, that are, have no relation to our family, making these decisions. So can I, when I say today, "Thank you," what you are doing and the resolution you are putting forward is compassionate. what you are doing and the resolution you are putting forward is compassionate.
Thank you.
Hello. I'd like to thank the council for listening to us today. And I'm here because I am also a mother, a mother of eight beautiful children. I have a son, who, my youngest one, has Down syndrome. I was told that my son, by an obstetrician-gynecologist, that he wouldn't be compatible with life, whatever that means. My son was already living in my womb, kicking. His heart was beating. He is a beautiful example of life. And the experts told me that he wasn't worthy of life, that I should abort him. Well, they couldn't have been more wrong, because nine months later, my son, who had, yes, some heart defects that were one miraculously healed, and the other one healed on its own, has brought so much joy and happiness to our town, to our family, to the world. I know that in Sweden, 10 out of 10 children diagnosed in the womb with Down syndrome are aborted. This is a tragedy for our world. Mother Teresa said, "The greatest threat to world peace is abortion." You know why? Because it teaches that violence is the solution, a convenient solution, to weed out the ones that aren't desirable, the ones that aren't considered as able as us. No, it is us that sacrifice for the poorest of the poor. The poorest of the poor are not just people who don't have food, but they are people who depend on us in the womb. They are already living, compatible with life, from the moment of conception. And I would never want my son to be aborted because of some defect. And I'm a, I'm a woman who's supposed to be able to be a rocket scientist, a physician, a lawyer, but I can't be a mother to a disabled child? That is insulting to me as a woman, and also a woman of color. They target our community. Abortion and Planned Parenthood is one of the most racist eugenic programs around. The black community is the highest in this country, with the highest abortion rate. I am appalled that this is the choice that my black people have been given, and mothers have been given. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Gary Biet. Let's do it into the speaker, that way you can hear me. I have a problem with this for, especially for one reason. When this was written, it was stated that abortion is a constitutional right. I have a copy, and it's only a small copy of the Constitution. There is nothing in the Constitution that says this, nothing. And I don't know why that was ever used. It offends me that you would think that this would be a constitutional right to take a baby's life. And, and it appalls me. And the other thing I'm thinking is now, if you forward this on to the, to the Mero Committee, and they are in favor of it, even if it's some of them, they're going to put their name on this, and this bill is going to be forwarded with the logo of East Hampton, Massachusetts on it. I don't favor this. I don't want anybody out there, or anybody else, to think that I am part of this, at all. You must be thinking about everybody here in East Hampton. Not a few, not a few at all. And retracting this statement about a constitutional right, it is not a constitutional right. As far as I'm concerned, it's murder. And that is not a constitutional right.
My name is Doris Daya, and I live in East Hampton. I have two situations. Number one, I had many miscarriages when I first tried to have a family. I finally was able to get pregnant. I spent the first three months in bed. Second trimester was great. Third trimester, they found out I was carrying twins. I spent the last three months in bed. Had to have emergency cesarean and gave birth to two perfectly normal, healthy babies, which was a blessing from God, because I had lost so many. 18 months later, I miscarried again, twins this time. Was devastated, because they put you in the maternity ward once you've had a miscarriage. I finally was able to have my son, carried him full-term. Very thankful, very blessed to have three wonderful children after everything I had been through. Secondly, almost 14 years ago, my daughter was pregnant. They did tests on her, they did an amniocentesis. They told her that my grandson, I don't even remember what the issues were, but they tried to talk her into an abortion. She said no, and they made her go to genetic counseling, because they wanted her to have the abortion. December 7th, that young man will be 14. Plays soccer, he has a heart of gold, and there is nothing physically or mentally wrong with him. They wanted to abort this baby for nothing. So I certainly am totally against this. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Joan Gore. I don't live in East Hampton. I've come because I think it's vital that we stand up for this, stand up for life. I, myself, like her, have had miscarriages. You don't understand what we go through. You don't understand what Planned Parenthood doesn't tell young girls. Have you watched any of yours, Unplanned?
I'm sorry, what?
Have you watched Unplanned?
It was a movie.
Yes.
Just for, we're not supposed to do a lot of cross-talk in public speech.
Well, I'm just telling you, watch it. Because if you're against life, your life will be changed. Because it's a horror movie, what Unplanned, what, what Planned Parenthood is. I've had two miscarriages. And I've had two children that spent a great deal of time at Boston Children's Hospital, and weren't supposed to live past the age of five. But they're both grown men now with their own families. Doctors aren't always right. My grandchildren, with my, one of my grandsons, she had, they're twins. They were born at 25 weeks, perfectly healthy. They were two pounds, one was 312, 33. They didn't even have to go into an incubator. But we prayed, and we had faith that God would take care of them. That's what's lacking today in this world. There is no faith. The morals of this country right now are terrible. And you, as, as our representatives, need to question what's happening. Because when you become complicit with the laws that they want to pass that are bad, you are complicit with it. And we just ask you to think carefully, because doctors aren't always right. That's why they call it the practice of medicine. Thank you.
I'm Dorothy Parker. I'm a citizen of East Hampton. The part of this resolution, law, that I object to, I object to all of it, but the one that I object to most is the fact that children, children do not have to have parental or court consent to have an abortion. Now, if you look at some of the other laws, and the requirement for consent for those laws, and then we have this without consent. The age of sexual consent is 16. Inpatient mental health, choice can be made by a 16- or 17-year-old without the consent of the parent. Children up to the age of 16 have to wear a bicycle helmet. In order to get pierced ears, not an invasive procedure, you have to get parental consent until the age of 18. If you want a tattoo as a child, you have to wait until age 18, even if the parent is with you. Okay? The age of consent for medical treatment is 18. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Coleman. I'm a resident of East Hampton. And, and basically, I don't want my tax dollars going to no abortion, but less my tax dollars going to abortion up to nine months. And you're going to sit here and tell, tell us that the, if a baby is born, the baby may be suffering if you have some ailment, but at the same time, you don't think the baby's going to feel that abortion at nine months, inside of a womb? The baby's going to be tortured if they abort the baby at nine months? And I'm totally against this. And you will, I will be here tomorrow night, and I'm going to speak my mind tomorrow night. This should not be allowed up to our representative, or a nine, a East Hampton, put an East Hampton stamp on, on something that, I guarantee you, you bring it in front of all the residents of East Hampton, we all will be against it. If you want to speak for the people, bring it to East Hampton for a vote. Not, not a committee saying, "Put out East Hampton stamp, or we'll agree with this bill." No, we don't. And I don't agree with it either.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose. And I'm not from East Hampton, I'm coming from Springfield. But I got five beautiful children. And three of them are triplets. When we find out, when the doctor, they find out that they were triplets, they suggest us to do an abortion for two of those babies. And right away, we say no, because we believe in life. And right now, I feel blessed, because my tri, my triplets, they born healthy. And I got three beautiful children. And I, I made the right decision to not go for abortion. I'm really against that. And I, I know this is not part of this, but I'm going to show you the recent picture for the three of them. And that way you can think about that. Sorry about that. These are the children.
Beautiful kids.
And every day, I'm, I'm thinking about if I, if I made the wrong decision, they would have lied. See that? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Stan Diamond. I'm a resident of East Hampton. I have never, and will never, need an abortion. But I was active during the original Roe v. Wade work that passed and became part of the Constitution, and was approved by the Supreme Court, and is now part of the law of the land. This resolution, in my mind, in no way forces anyone to have an abortion. The decision should always remain, and will remain, between the woman, her family, and her medical practitioners. No one else should be involved in that decision. For everyone who has been up here talking about how pro-life they are, I would like to see more work done about stopping the shootings in schools of children.
Please address us.
I would like to see more work done in terms of stopping the shootings in schools of children. I would like to see more work done about making sure that children are supported by society, and get enough to eat, and a healthy place to live, and a safe place to grow up. This is what pro-life means to me. And I would also like to see more work done to stop this country from killing children around the world. That's how I feel, and I do not feel that this law in any way forces anyone to have an abortion at any time. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura. I live on Ridgewood Terrace in East Hampton. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution, as I'm sure you all know. And I just, I want to start out by just talking about some misconceptions that some people might have about this resolution, and about current laws in Massachusetts, and about what the Roe Act itself does. Mass Health already fully covers abortion, fully, in Massachusetts. So we're not changing anything having to do with state tax dollars going to healthcare, because currently it goes to healthcare. If someone wants to bring up an issue with that, they can, but that's not what this bill is doing. Abortion is already allowed in Massachusetts after 24 weeks in cases of physical or mental endangerment to the person carrying the pregnancy. This bill would ensure that people also, like we heard earlier, dealing with fatal fetal anomalies, have the ability to not have to travel to New Mexico or Colorado and leave New England to receive basic healthcare, which happens all the time. And no other pregnancy care requires parental consent in Massachusetts. Prenatal, postnatal, it does not require consent. Abortion requires parental consent in Massachusetts. It's one of 17 states that requires that. I also just, I wanted to thank everyone for sharing their story today. It's, it's their story, and it's theirs to tell, but it's their stories. There are many different experiences when it comes to pregnancy. I am a volunteer with the Abortion Rights Fund of Western Massachusetts. I hear, once a week, every couple of months, a very large number of people who need funding for their abortion, and I hear their stories. So I just wanted to be here to share, you know, the fact that I talk to people all the time who can't afford their abortions, can't talk to their parents, because they live in an abusive household, about their abortions, people who have to travel outside of the state to receive their abortions, which makes it potentially prohibitive for a lot of people. And these are people in Western Massachusetts. These are people in Northampton, East Hampton, Holyoke, Springfield, I talk to all the time. So this is a real issue, and it affects our community. I also just want to say, this bill is about decisions around healthcare made between a doctor and their patient. It is infuriating that I have to stand up here. I don't want to have a discussion with you all about my uterus. But I am. I'm talking to you all about my uterus right now.
Sorry, Laura, your time's up.
Thank you.
Just if we can continue to limit the cross-talk, that'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Francisco Rosario. I'm from Springfield. And I came, came here with a... And I came here with Jose, which have the triplets. Pro-life, I think it's not choosing. God gives you life. That's what I think. He gave me life, I cannot take it away. I gotta let God do his work. You know, a lot of time, a lot of, a lot of ways, we can say, you know, is there option? Okay, so who are we gonna blame? Who are we blaming? If the children is coming deformed, who are we gonna blame? Who are we gonna crucify, the child who's coming in the womb? Or who are we thinking about? So, you know, I'm against abortion, I'm pro-life, and I'm here just to support that. And God bless you all.
Thank you.
Can I talk twice?
Let's make sure everybody else has a chance to speak.
Is there anybody else that has not spoken that wants to speak? No? Okay.
I just want to address, oh, you do? Have you spoken yet? No? Okay.
My name is Wendy Damsick, and I'm from East Hampton. And I am, I don't want anything to do with abortion, and I don't want any of my tax dollars to do, to go toward anything for abortion. I think this issue needs to be voted on by the public, not by certain groups of people who deem it necessary. I'd like to see this whole bill abolished and presented to the public to be voted on by the people. We are the runners of the people, not the politicians. They work for us. They need to know that. They need to know that our votes count and that our feelings count. They passed the abortion bill, they passed the gay rights bill, the gay marriage bill. That was never, we were never able to vote on that. And I think that if you put that, those issues before the people at large, that they would not pass. It's just being slid under the rug, and I'm getting tired of it.
Should we just let the public?
Sure, go for it. I just wanted to say that I know if everybody's spoken, who hasn't spoken already, has spoken, tomorrow night is another time to speak. So, if you're gonna speak again to try and counter and discuss this, I think it's more appropriate for you to come tomorrow night when there's all of the council for you to speak to. If you don't wanna come tomorrow night, and you really wanna say something again, okay. But I just wanted to let you know that that's gonna happen. So, if you wanna speak again, I guess it's up to the chairman.
Yeah, we'll keep it going as long as we need to. Okay. I'm not gonna censor you.
No, you're right. I just wanted to let them know there's another opportunity.
I just wanted to talk about, you know, I just wanted to add to the, about the tax dollars. I also feel, and I'm not talking for myself, I'm talking for a lot of people, that the tax, our tax dollars shouldn't go for abortion. That's something that might be legal, but, you know, we don't, we don't want our tax dollars going for that. That's another reason we're here, too. And as far as Planned Parenthood goes, this wasn't mentioned, but she said, the lady said she had a job, but, you know, Planned Parenthood makes billions and billions of dollars, trillions of dollars, through basically slaughtering babies. It's really sick. It's to the point where selling baby parts, slaughtering babies, it's, what kind of people have we become to do something so horrendous to a child playing God? We're playing God. This is so dangerous. And East Hampton is a little town that most people enjoy here, they're, most people don't believe in that. I truly believe that, from talking to a lot of people in town, that couldn't be here. And it's just insane to say, we wanna raise it to the level of what this, this bill is opposing, you know, is proposing. So, I'm asking you all, you four people that are here tonight, to please bring the majority of this room's, which it seems like the majority of this room's opinion, to your board, and let them know that our hearts are with God and not with, you know, a demon. We, East Hampton is a godly city, or used to be. And I've enjoyed living here for a while now. I haven't lived here all my life, but I've enjoyed this town. But this town is just turning into playing God lately, and that's not good, because we can't be God. And that's why we can't say abortion is all right. Because that's up to God.
Is that everybody who wants to speak?
I have a question. This bill, because it says that it eliminates the requirement that provides medical care to a child who survives abortion.
We don't, we're not gonna respond to the bill, we don't make the bill.
But there's two, there's two bills.
All right. I'd have to get back to you on that. In the bill that I have in front of me, I don't see that.
There's two bills. And one of it says eliminates, I mean, that's happening right now, where children are putting into a comfort room.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I not answer that question, but add a comment onto that?
You can come to the podium.
You can come to the podium again. But again, I really wanna limit, I don't want this to become a big argument between the crowd, so.
I'd be interested in reading whatever, I don't know if I can direct it.
No, please direct everything towards us.
Okay, I'd be interested in reading wherever in the bill it states that, because I have read the bill many times, and it does not state that, so I'd just be interested in knowing where it comes from.
Thank you.
If there's any specific provisions that you're concerned about, like, feel free to forward them on to us, the language itself, but I just don't see that right here. If that's everyone, I'm happy to close the public hearing, and we can begin deliberation here.
Will we close the public hearing?
A second. All right, all the people.
Just a comment, Mr. President. All of you in the room should know that this committee and all the council has heard a great deal of comment on this from the other side of the coin. So, we listen to everybody, we listen to you, and we listen to those in favor. A great many people in favor have already spoken at the council level. That's why I brought it up again. So, it's not like this is the only people that have gotten to us. There's a lot of people out there that have spoken on both sides of this issue that influence us. And I love the democratic process we're allowed to have in this country that allows you to come, pro or against, any issue. Thank you for participating. I hope we see you for issues that might be a little closer to home, like whether we should build a school or something like that. Anyway, I just want you to know that, that we listen to all sides, and we've already listened to a great many other people. So, don't think that this is the majority, because we don't know what that is. All right? Thank you. That's my comment.
All right. One comment I would sort of like to make as we just keep this going, and it's one that I've made a bunch of times before, is that there does seem to be pretty frequent consternation on this and other issues about the way that we're getting information out to the public. And I don't, I don't have the immediate solution, but I think that that's a thing that we need to continue to advocate for and brainstorm on. And if, you know, if anyone, I would encourage anyone in the public, if they have ideas about how they, how we get information out better, to get to us, because I will freely admit that it's, right now, we're not, probably, we're not where we need to be.
Absolutely.
So, with that said, you know, the other thing that I would say is that I do think, you know, we've heard a good deal about, should this go to the ballot? You know, it is, you know, East Hampton, every voter in East Hampton has the right to try and, and challenge anything, any action of the city council on the ballot. That's something that we really believe in, still there. It always, and I think that always will be on, in the East Hampton Charter. But that said, I do believe that the city council, you know, part of being elected is that we get the authority to say what we, as city councilors, believe and communicate that to our peers in other levels of government. If people don't like that, like, don't like what we say, they're welcome to run against us, they're welcome to recall us, whatever they need to do. But we do have, that is an authority that we are granted under our charter and that we routinely use. With that said, what do you guys think?
I'll go first. I mean, first of all, from both sides, thank you for those stories. They're just so, you know, deeply wrenching and personal and, you know, are really, probably some of them were terribly hard to share, and some of them were wonderful to share, but thank you for sharing them. I guess a couple of points have gone through my head. I know a lot of times, this has come about, you know, representatives and how are you just voting? You know, the type of government we have on the local level, as well as the state level, is a representative government. And that's why it is so important to be involved, that when I, years ago, would vote for John Sibek, I know I couldn't be there for every vote he was going to take. But the times I talked to him, I said, you know, he will do the research, I feel his opinion most aligns with mine, and I am going to trust him, because I can't, we don't have the type of government where I can vote on every single issue. I have to find a representative that I believe in, that I believe their thoughts are closest to mine and will align most of the time with the way. And that's sort of on a local level, what you have to do with the city council. So, it is frustrating, as we all feel, you know, like, a couple of years ago, we had seven people running for five at large, and now we have five people running for four at large, or we should have 10 people running for five at large. There are so many differences of opinions. And quite honestly, although I probably lean more left, there are many of you who don't, and your voice on the council is underrepresented. Please find people to run, to have your voice more represented, if you feel left out, because that's where, that's where you participate. So, that's a little bit on the government aspect of it. The thing that has come to me during most of these discussions, I thought was so touching, is those lovely stories of the triplets. And I know this will probably not make some people, but to me, no one made you get an abortion, you were able to make that choice. I choose life in this case, and it worked for you, and congratulations, it was wonderful. But then I have Lindsay up there, and that may have been a completely different story for her. And I can't, I can't with a right mind take that choice away from her. I just think that she could've put those children through terrible things, she could've put herself through potentially death. I mean, I just, I applaud you for your right to make the choice you made, and I am so truly happy it worked for you, but I don't know it's fair to say that that outcome would work for everybody, and we have the right to make that decision. I do believe that those painstakingly hard decisions are between the woman, her healthcare provider, and whoever her God or faith may be. And maybe there is not a faith, but whoever that person she wants, she feels. I think, I really believe that is that decision. Again, and this has been said before, we are talking about a general resolution about this council, this council supporting it. You have every right, as I mentioned earlier, to vote against the councilors, to write letters, but certainly, you will be most effective by talking to the government. We are not going to vote on this bill. We are not going to vote on this bill. The representatives in Boston will vote on this bill. These are the people, if you feel strong about this, you should be talking to and making sure they hear your voice. We are saying, as a counselor, as we got elected by our constituents, which is a broad constituency, how we feel people who elected us would want us to vote on this. And lastly, though, I do wanna know all the facts. So, certainly, I would like to see that information. I just wanna make sure I have all the facts that you have. I'd like to look into it before tomorrow night to find out where that came from. But that's, that's all I would like to say about tonight.
Counselor Rest.
I wasn't gonna bring this up tonight, but since there's a lot of people in the community here that...
Excuse me, could we please keep the cross-talk to a minimum? Thank you.
...that are opposed to the bill at the state level. I wanted to let you know where I stand on this. It is not about, to me, abortion or pro-abortion. In 1973, when the Supreme Court decided Roe v. Wade, they decided it based on the legal justification that embedded in the Constitution, which does make it constitutional, because we have a system of government where the Supreme Court makes these decisions to support law, constitutional or not, embedded in the Constitution is the right to privacy. And I wanted to say that that is the overwhelming factor when I make a decision to maintain what this law is about and what Roe v. Wade was about. It was about privacy, the privacy of you to be able to have medical decisions made between you and your doctor. Now, imagine, if you will, if there was a state that decided that in order to, just turn it around, in order to help with population growth, they would tell you, a mother who was about to have a third child, a second child, that you're not allowed to have that child, that you must abort it. If there was a state that said, "We have too many people, and you can't do that, because you don't have that privacy in that particular country." You can't tell your doctor or talk to your doctor without the state getting involved. Imagine, if you will, if there was a state that said, "After the age of 60, state healthcare no longer allows you to get the urgent care you need to survive, because they can't afford to keep older people alive." Does that, what if a state did that? That is part of privacy. That is part of the nature of this whole law, for me. That's just my opinion. That state exists, unfortunately. So, the consequence of opposing Roe and having that changed at the federal level, and it may happen, God help us if it does, because then it will tell everybody that the state gets to be involved in your private medical decisions and your private legal decisions. They get involved in your ability to have privacy with your attorney. So, please, be careful what you wish for.
It's coming.
Excuse me. Public speak is closed.
That is where I stand, because I believe in the right to privacy, and I believe that's what this is. So, I'm in favor of this, and if there's no more comment, I'll move that we adopt it.
Tom has the right to say.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, you know, I'll echo part of what Counselor McCoy said, President McCoy. I think it's awesome that a lot of you made the choice to have children, in some cases in high-risk scenarios, and I'm happy that those kids are happy and healthy and that they have great lives. And I bet you're all really great parents, so, thank you. I, I've had experiences in my life with people that weren't so lucky. I have a very close family member, one of the people I look up to most in the world, who had a case where their son had absolutely zero chance of surviving. Their rib cage just stopped growing very early, and they were going to very, very painfully and slowly die in the womb. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts did not permit them to get an abortion. So, this person, absolutely heartbroken and traumatized and contemplating suicide with their grief, had to fly to another state to end what was a, a life that had, that had absolutely no chance of ever making it to birth, right? Now, that, that's the part of this that strikes a chord to me. We can have this, excuse me. Excuse me.
Please.
We can have, there's a broader conversation about abortion, about privacy, about all of these things. I'm not interested in having that conversation. I don't believe that I, as a city counselor, am in a position to be the one making a lot of those decisions. What I do believe I can do is express my opinion to our legislators at higher levels. What I do believe I can do is express my opinion to our legislators at higher levels. And I'm going to make that decision based on the facts of, you know, in front of me. And if that decision leads to people voting me out of office, then, then that's actually great, because it means that people get representation that better fits them. But right now, I'm in this chair, and I am gonna make the decision that I think is right. And so, right now, I support this. Now, if you, if somebody can send me something in the next 24 hours that says that actually this is, I'm reading this wrong, and this is actually some horrible, horrible thing, then maybe I can change my mind. But right now, where I am, I'm ready to vote on this, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move we adopt the resolution as presented by Counselor Connor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. That is to recommend it to the full council.
Yes, to recommend it to the full council.
Some emotion with me.
Okay. Anything else?
No, just, so the public again. So tomorrow night, the city council is at, meets at 6 o'clock? Is this, is there a public hearing set for this? I don't think there's a public hearing.
But there'll still be public speak.
I would suggest, Mr. President, that you allow, since there may be a lot of people wanting to speak, that you tell everybody that when this is brought forward by rules, you reopen public speak. I think that's the better thing to do, just personally, but that's your...
Excuse me. Can you guys please keep it down?
So you're, so you're all aware of the way the meeting will go tomorrow? We have, there are certain things that we have to, by law, have public hearings on, and those are usually financial and bonding things. But this, so this will be public speak time. Typically, that is usually a short period of time, where people come up and they can talk about whatever going on in the community or their feelings or something. Obviously, this is much more important, much more emotional, much more significant. So this will be discussed again during the rules part of the meeting. We will open up public speak time initially in the beginning of the meeting, but then I will open up it again during the rule segment of the city council meeting to make sure everyone gets their voice heard again. And then, then the, not just three of us, Counselor Connor is actually on this committee, but the nine counselors will be here tomorrow to take a whole vote on the resolution if it gets. And again, this is not passing a law in the city or the state. This is simply the council's opinion on if this law should be passed or not. And again, you're probably, you're, if this is something you believe in strongly, please contact your state representative and senator, because they will be working, they will actually be voting on this law.
All right. barring anything else, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.